All right, we'll call the March 13, 2018 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And I would like to welcome all of you in attendance. We're obviously having some audio issues up here, so if we're too loud or too quiet, just raise your hand. We want all of you to be able to hear us and understand us. So again, if you can't hear us, just let us know and we'll make some accommodations. I love seeing all the veterans in the house tonight. We appreciate your service. And I think we have a couple of them on our agenda tonight for y'all. So thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here very much. With that, it looks like we've got a pretty good meeting to get tonight, so we'll roll right into things. Are there any announcements?
One announcement, Mr. Chairman. On March 27th from 11 to 4 at the Macon or in Deverbank Police Center, we'll be having a kickoff meeting called "No Wrong Door." We'll have a lot of folks there, including our local service department, everybody from the DA. This will be a program that we're going to help Department of DSS for folks to come that just don't know where to go to when they need help with the substance abuse. So we encourage anybody that would like to come. This is a kickoff meeting. We want to determine, is there a need for it? Is it sustainable? Is it feasible? So that's on the 27th from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the afternoon. You're certainly welcome to be there. And we look forward to a good turnout and hopefully, as we look down the road to Medicaid reform, we're trying to get close to things. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill. I'd like to mention that Commissioner Bill, myself and our county manager, Mr. Rowland, were able to go to Washington DC last weekend for the National Association of Counties Convention. And we were able to relate and share some stories from our experiences here in Macon County and learn how people in other places do it. Especially had some outstanding conversations with a commissioner from northern Wisconsin. Very similar sized county to Macon, very similar in the fact that national forest is a big part of their county. But what was also interesting is the way their population works like ours. In other words, we have a huge growth in the summertime and things tend to die down in the wintertime. So we talked about schools and various other things, but I thought it was interesting. We deal with five commissioners here, and sometimes it's tough counting to three so we can get a majority. They have 29 commissioners in their county, or 35,000 citizen counties, which is grown on the same, same, and I was, I was blown away. But anyway, we had some good conversations. We also had good meetings with our, both our US Senators and our Congressman, Mark Meadows. And it was very worth us being, it was very, very productive. And I thank them for their service as well. So with that, we'll all rise, we'll observe among the songs, how lots of Commissioner Phils, ladies and gentlemen.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll run on into our public comment period. First up, we have Norrell Kirkland.
Grandlives, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We all know where Bilos is. 10 years ago, I was coming back into Franklin from Thailand and I was approaching the exit for Bilo when I noticed a woman with white hair stop and observed the car that was coming from town about 20 yards from her. I was about 30 yards. She saw both of us and pulled out. And I swerved, and the other car swerved, and we avoided an accident. Well, unfortunately, this is now 10 years later, and I'm in that mid-'70s area myself. I can barely remember when I go from one end of my house to the other, why I went to the other end. What was I going to do when I got there? So I need a safe place to bicycle and walk and enjoy nature. As you guys know, you have successfully revised the kid, kiddie area at Wesley Playground. We have the marvelous Derek Meadows, Parker Meadows Baseball Facility. You've finished doing the Carpenter Building. There are repaving or graveling on the area where the soccer field is played on Sunday. And we need, though, a facility for older people to get off the street and go somewhere to walk and bicycle safely. Well, fortunately, you don't need to hire any contractors, you don't need to buy any land, you don't need to do any grading, grading. You've got it, the Greenway. But this facility, as I'm sure many of you can attest, has been neglected for 14 years, ever since Hurricane Ivan, when we had to do some serious improvements on the pathway and one small cave-in on the northern section which you have repaired. There are now five different areas on the Greenway that need addressed. There are three in the southern section that need to be paved. There is an area just near the Tassali entrance, the middle section, where the track hoe did all its work back in 2004 and left a very verbal surface. And then where the cave-in happened on the northern section, that pavement is very narrow and that needs to be widened. So I implore that you guys attend to this. Except for Mr. Gillespie, this should sound permitted, because I was here a year ago saying the same thing and nothing has happened. I received five quads from the audience when I, when we adjourned at that meeting, so there really is interest. We need this for the citizens who are seniors to, and I've understood from the county manager that some 9,000 of us in the county. It really needs to be addressed, and I urgently request that you include it in the budget now and get started in April and finish these very small but needed repairs.
Thank you, General. Donald Derrick, Airport. Welcome, Donald.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. We've got to quit meeting like this. I just had a couple of things. You know, new to the community and I just am kind of looking at things about the airport expansion. I see that in 2011, they extended the air, the airstrip, the length of it and all that. And then in 2013, somebody decided that it needs to be 25 feet wider. And now we need to lengthen it again. I guess my biggest question about this is, do we need to go ahead and make it 20,000 people on while we're doing this so we don't have to do this every 3 to 5 years?
Did you want to do an answer?
Sure.
Okay. I'll answer in fact that I'm not liaison to the Airport where Carl is, but generally the funds for the expansions you're talking about, 90% of it is paid for by FAA or federal funds. So we're kind of at their discretion. Kind of like at your house, that you do a $50,000 renovation for five. So we're at the discretion kind of of them or whenever they make these recommendations, we, that's when we do it. So if they said that, Chad, we need to do that and we can do it for 10% on the dollar, I guess we consider it. So we're basically following their lead on when that comes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, of course. But all for use and providing if it's there, I just, I just wonder if there's, if there's any thought given to, or we're going to be back here in 3 to 5 years from now, we need another 5,000 feet on the airport. If they're going to do it, if they're going to go dig, they'll dig with it. You know, that's, that's just my thing. I don't think, I don't think that anybody in this room ever thinks that we're going to be Asheville, Charlotte, or Atlanta in our lifetime. Nor do I think we want to be. I live a tear for recent, and it was getting away from those places. So anyway, those are, those are just some food for thought about where, where we stop on this. Because we got one. It seems to me like no matter whether it's the federal government says standing in the right of, whether it's being in conjunction with the state, it's a good thing that it's in. If it's just a couple of places, a couple of businesses, I understand that they furnish a lot of jobs for the community and all the ways that you're okay and enjoy it and all that. I've heard a lot said about Swain County, Jackson County, even down in Georgia, you know, we're going to have a great airport for them. They make it a reasonable airport and that's what they make. They're not there going to use it. As long as Cherokee, those people that come here and spend money, they ain't spending on Macon County. I promise you, they, they're going, because I'm filling up county and spending enough for whatever they want to hear or not. That's all I have, just.
Mr. Chairman, something to think about. Thank you for your time. I would encourage you, Mr. Chairman, what day do you all meet for the Airport Board? Just attend one and ask some questions and say, oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
I'm sorry, but that was one other question I had. I'm going to go down here. The Airport Board's website, they meet last Tuesday, each month. They put posting their minutes in July of 27th on the website.
Out of curiosity, I was literally just looking through a few minutes.
I was just curious to why they don't post their minutes or their names anymore.
Mr. Chairman. The meeting for this month is Tuesday, March 20th, and that is down at Airport, Macon County. They're shooting somebody there and they regret that and all, but it's a place that I would prefer to come, any questions you have, the authority. Particularly, there is a community there that works with Airport Authority, is a very familiar with a lot of the questions you're asking in regards to running lanes wide and just want to fly away and play with that way to end with and those types of things. And I'm pretty sure we're willing to get those questions answered.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you for your attention and question. Howie Jacobs? Welcome, Mr. Jacobs.
I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Holland said a better speech than I did. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Paul and Derek for coming over a few weeks ago and answering a lot of questions and just being there and listening to a lot of our folks talk in his buddy time. And thank Paul for quite a bit of words too, about some stuff that we would like to have and we'd like to see get here. So I'm up here smiling at you guys and asking that you kind of go our way this time. Really appreciate it. And again, I thank Paul directly for coming over and answering all the questions and all the gifts of Blacken over there, so.
Wish we'd had the right answer.
We appreciate it and appreciate that we can reconsider what we put before Paul and like I told you before, Nana Hill really needs to be put back on the mound over the distance. Let him come and go and my money going back. Thank you very much and appreciate it. Thank you.
David Walker? Welcome.
Gentlemen, now, I'm David Walker. I'm in the garden block. We want to get the clock going. I can fix it. Fix the time also, so it won't follow us so much. I want your permission.
Thank you, President. Thank you. (Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Georgia Tech engineer, rocket scientist ought to be able to do something.
Okay. Can't play bass, he calls me. I'm sorry, David.
He just doesn't know any better, sorry.
He's got a son, he's going. Mr. Chairman, is there anything you'd allow to let him, shouldn't be worried about?
I think it might be a good idea for him and the county manager to get together, make sure we know when that's going to happen and if they, if they will be, it might be assistance to Mr. Walker to make us might be able to help assist with flatters or other items.
Mr. Ward, if I can have your contact information, I'll call you in a little bit.
Be aware, he's a military, it may be a 24-hour clock.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Bill, additions to the agenda?
I have two.
Commissioner Phil, go ahead.
Two packs, right back there. I remember you hold on to the second, I'll get you on the agenda first. Maybe I might have changed the whole time. I'm calling you. Two packs, my friend, he's behind, he's in the board's side. Should we speak about the conference, the board's role? And finally, we have another one, 9F, Rick Norton, or Tommy Walton, will be speaking President of the DA chapter 994, that represents their conference. He's been on his whole time, we call y'all for that. And also, don't forget, I've got a reminder, remember March 31st, just making sure the word, March 31st is, Rick, Rick.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll run on into our public comment period. First up, we have Norrell Kirkland.
Grandlives, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We all know where Bilos is. 10 years ago, I was coming back into Franklin from Thailand and I was approaching the exit for Bilo when I noticed a woman with white hair stop and observed the car that was coming from town about 20 yards from her. I was about 30 yards. She saw both of us and pulled out. And I swerved, and the other car swerved, and we avoided an accident. Well, unfortunately, this is now 10 years later, and I'm in that mid-'70s area myself. I can barely remember when I go from one end of my house to the other, why I went to the other end. What was I going to do when I got there? So I need a safe place to bicycle and walk and enjoy nature. As you guys know, you have successfully revised the kid, kiddie area at Wesley Playground. We have the marvelous Derek Meadows, Parker Meadows Baseball Facility. You've finished doing the Carpenter Building. There are repaving or graveling on the area where the soccer field is played on Sunday. And we need, though, a facility for older people to get off the street and go somewhere to walk and bicycle safely. Well, fortunately, you don't need to hire any contractors, you don't need to buy any land, you don't need to do any grading, you've got it, the Greenway. But this facility, as I'm sure many of you can attest, has been neglected for 14 years, ever since Hurricane Ivan, when we had to do some serious improvements on the pathway and one small cave-in on the northern section which you have repaired. There are now five different areas on the Greenway that need addressed. There are three in the southern section that need to be paved. There is an area just near the Tassali entrance, the middle section, where the track hoe did all its work back in 2004 and left a very verbal surface. And then where the cave-in happened on the northern section, that pavement is very narrow and that needs to be widened. So I implore that you guys attend to this. Except for Mr. Gillespie, this should sound permitted, because I was here a year ago saying the same thing and nothing has happened. I received five quads from the audience when I, when we adjourned at that meeting, so there really is interest. We need this for the citizens who are seniors to, and I've understood from the county manager that some 9,000 of us in the county. It really needs to be addressed, and I urgently request that you include it in the budget now and get started in April and finish these very small but needed repairs.
Thank you, General. Donald Derrick, Airport.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. We've got to quit meeting like this. I just had a couple of things. You know, new to the community and I just am kind of looking at things about the airport expansion. I see that in 2011, they extended the airstrip, the length of it and all that. And then in 2013, somebody decided that it needs to be 25 feet wider. And now we need to lengthen it again. I guess my biggest question about this is, do we need to go ahead and make it 20,000 people on while we're doing this so we don't have to do this every 3 to 5 years?
Did you want to do an answer?
Sure.
Okay. I'll answer in fact that I'm not liaison to the Airport where Carl is, but generally the funds for the expansions you're talking about, 90% of it is paid for by FAA or federal funds. So we're kind of at their discretion. Kind of like at your house, that you do a $50,000 renovation for five. So we're at the discretion kind of of them or whenever they make these recommendations, we, that's when we do it. So if they said that, Chad, we need to do that and we can do it for 10% on the dollar, I guess we consider it. So we're basically following their lead on when that comes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, of course. Of course, if I'm talking to you, I'm all for you. But maybe if it's there, I just wonder if there's, if there's any thought given to, or we're going to be back here in 3 to 5 years from now, we need another 5,000 feet on the airport. If they're going to do it, if they're going to go dig, they'll dig with it. You know, that's just my thing. I don't think, I don't think that anybody in this room ever thinks that we're going to be Asheville, Charlotte, or Atlanta in our lifetime. Nor do I think we want to be. I live a tear for recent, and it was getting away from those places. So anyway, those are, those are just some food for thought about where, where we stop on this. Because we got one. It seems to me like no matter whether it's the federal government says standing in the right of, whether it's being in conjunction with the state, it's a good thing that it's in. If it's just a couple of places, a couple of businesses, I understand that they furnish a lot of jobs for the community and all the ways that you're okay and enjoy it and all that. I've heard a lot said about Swain County, Jackson County, even down in Georgia, you know, we're going to have a great airport for them. They make it a reasonable airport and that's what they make. They're not there going to use it. As long as Cherokee, those people that come here and spend money, they ain't spending on Macon County. I promise you, they, they're going, because I'm filling up county and spending enough for whatever they want to hear or not. That's all I have, just.
Mr. Chairman, something to think about. Thank you for your time. I would encourage you, Mr. Chairman, what day do you all meet for the Airport Board? Just attend one and ask some questions and say, oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
I'm sorry, but that was one other question I had. I'm going to go down here. The Airport Board's website, they meet last Tuesday, each month. They put posting their minutes in July of 27th on the website. I was just curious to why they don't post their minutes or their names anymore.
Mr. Chairman, the meeting for this month is Tuesday, March 20th, and that is down at Airport, Macon County. They're shooting somebody there and they regret that and all, but it's a place that I would prefer to come, any questions you have, the authority. Particularly, there is a community there that works with Airport Authority, is a very familiar with a lot of the questions you're asking in regards to running lanes wide and just want to fly away and play with that way to end with and those types of things. And I'm pretty sure we're willing to get those questions answered.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you for your attention and question. Howie Jacobs?
Welcome, Mr. Jacobs.
I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Holland said a better speech than I did. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Paul and Derek for coming over a few weeks ago and answering a lot of questions and just being there and listening to a lot of our folks talk in his buddy time. And thank Paul for quite a bit of words too, about some stuff that we would like to have and we'd like to see get here. So I'm up here smiling at you guys and asking that you kind of go our way this time. Really appreciate it. And again, I thank Paul directly for coming over and answering all the questions and all the gifts of Blacken over there, so.
Wish we'd had the right answer.
We appreciate it and appreciate that we can reconsider what we put before Paul and like I told you before, Nana Hill really needs to be put back on the mound over the distance. Let him come and go and my money going back. Thank you very much and appreciate it. Thank you.
David Walker? Welcome.
Gentlemen, now, I'm David Walker. I'm in the garden block. We want to get the clock going. I can fix it. Fix the time also, so it won't follow us so much. I want your permission.
Thank you, President. Thank you.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, President.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, President.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, President.
(Clerk) Praise to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, President.
Center, we have a representative there speaking specifically about the time period, Preston time戳. They're also going to be going to Franklin High School, we talked with some high school students. So we're trying to reach out to the different areas and just bring forth education about importance and the historical importance specifically of women who have paved the way in Macon County. So be on the lookout in the paper and for any other upcoming events for the, specifically the Women's History Trail, we are moving forward, and we appreciate your support.
Let me just say, we welcome Town Council, Barbara McCray, to our meeting, and former County Commissioner, Mark West. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 9C, update on preliminary plans for library community building improvements in Nana Hala. Please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jacob said, Jacob, I went over, what you know, through these don't, there've been other, there've been Shield, I went, and work days, and been a few of us going over, and Karen Wallace, I guess, was cutting us on all of this, and she kept talking about how bad the library was. You know, you stand over there in a rainstorm, watching people leave the floor. It's pretty obvious. Folks in Nana Hala, they never asked for much of anything, but they come to us, Manny Jordan, whoever, for the library was there, and he, and we. And community got together, and our instructions to the little committee that informed, Alan, Randy, and a few of them there said, "We're not going to tell you what you guys need, but bring us a plan, tell us what could make life a little better in Nana Hala." As far as community building, library, basic services go, they formed the committee, and Derek now went over for the presentation, had to get us this summary back on February the 22nd, and it will make it part of the public record. I don't know how to do that. I'll give it to Derek, or Mike, or y'all, or Pete, or whatever. Simple, there's a lot of work to be done before we can do anything in Nana Hala. There's a lease piece of property over there that the rec mark's on right now, and we've got a lot of hurdles to go through to see. Number one, they need a new library and a new computer. Flat out, no doubt about it. It's in an antique double-wide trailer at the school right now. It's worn out. It's seen its useful life. So all I'm requesting is that in the upcoming capital improvements plan, that we put this on the front, and I think Mr. Shield would have to hang it up saying here. And we could take three commissioners at one time, because that's a, that's a form, so we had to do two at a time. But we've identified a need in Nana Hala. They've requested that we address that need, and have presented us a plan. And I just want to get it on the docket, that we address that this year, try to come up with some funding to start this thing, put wheels in motion. It's going to take a lot of work. We've got to deal with a lot of partners. Duke Energy, who owns the lease, or holds the lease, the library, Karen Wallace and the library board, county staff, EMS. There's a lot of partners, a lot of hurdles across to get to the point where we actually make some improvements. But if we don't start it now, we'll never finish it. And I'm just wanting to place a very high priority on this one agenda, or this one item, this upcoming budget year. And Derek, do you want to add anything?
I think, you know, just like you've mentioned, and just like we relate to the citizens in Nana Hala that night, you know, there is a lot of hurdles. There's a lot of players involved from Duke Energy, giving us the base on the property, the rec mark, the library board, the school system, which, the library board is a very close proximity to Nana Hala school. So a lot of discussion, a lot of players that will, that will take part in the process. But, you know, my sole purpose in going, just like I said when I was over there, was just to say, you know, this is a way to do it, that the commission, it is presenting it for consideration in the capital improvement plan, which basically allows us to look at capital needs such as this and prioritize them with all the needs we have in the county. So that, that would be the vehicle for something like this to be considered in, and we can consider it and, if we can discuss it, it's basically here in our discussion for the capital.
I think one of the citizens, Derek, let me make some copies. That's purpose of it. It's got the committee's name, contact numbers. You'll call these guys, they're willing to take over. And we thank you all for bringing all you guys on the committee's work to put this together, and to encourage the community over there to get behind you on this. They did a pretty good job getting everybody on board. I commend you, and thank you all for doing that, Alan, and Randy. Appreciate it.
No questions, Jim.
No questions, Jim.
Item 9D, comments for the Board of Elections Office.
Well, given that hope about this, sometimes we've identified as a need for the Board of Elections Office to get out and sell down the hole, primarily a female, well, pardon me here, now we have a gentleman working down there, but at times, there's only two women in there. I personally wouldn't let my wife work down there, right across the hall from the probation office. Some people carry guns down there. A couple times I've been down there, I just felt uncomfortable in the situation of these women and veterans. And we've talked about it, we've talked about it. It's been a topic of discussion for years, and I just want to go on public record, it's about concern, and I want it to save to the employees. And secondly, it's, it's, Gary lugged those loading machines on the elevator up, takes them out, brings them back, lugs them down the elevator, wearing them out, just transporting. It's not, it's not a good spot for the public. There's no parking up here. It's not ADA accessible. So it's just time, and, and, Mr. Chairman informed me that the courthouse security committee, another big word there, courthouse security committee has been meeting with members of the Board of Elections and addressing concerns, security and safety issues, and I'm proud of that. We just need to, we need to get this thing, make sure that we push it as fast as we can for the safety of everybody involved.
Thank you. I think, I think Melanie, again, by virtue of Mr. Chairman, that's just, that's another example of, of a need that, that we have. I know Melanie and I have talked a couple times about this, and, you know, in our department head meeting, we discussed it once again. Again, this will be a need coming from the department that, again, will be, will need to be discussed and considered as part of that capital improvement plan. And Melanie and I, I feel safe to say we're on the same page about that discussion. We do have it, you know, like discussions.
I have a question. The courthouse security commission, are they addressing this situation also? Is it being discussed separately? Who are we addressing at our meeting? Who is the courthouse security commission? Yes. All right. We'll move on to item 9E. Peter Jackson. Come on down. Hey, come on.
Okay. I didn't see you back there. I'm glad.
For several months, I've been working with this round sample, local, the DOD, Silver Star Office, laying a role for Dr. Thomas McNish, who is a Silver Star recipient, as well many of whom have known, met in Congress, here today. And what we need from this board, lots of details, but not difficult, just busy work. So we need a unanimous letter of support from this board, unanimous. Otherwise, it's not possible. And I do part of these permits, if you're a parent. The Vietnam veterans are very supportive of this, and they expect themselves, the sounds to be two sounds. We're hoping more on your own, because that's what the Silver Star is, and the sound must be there.
Forever, we can't, we can't, we can't have a vote for, we haven't agreed in other places. So we will write a, there'll be a resolution for next month's meeting, and we'll go before this morning, if we can see a copy, and give it to the veterans, too, for the unanimous vote. For people that don't know, McNish was going to, I guess, with Tom, called eight or nine, you know, Bob Farrelly, was a farmer, that he was a timber buyer, and he went on to become.
He had pages of what he used to do.
Yeah. If you don't know, Tom McNish was also a sister surgeon general. He's a well dead, he was. So it's, it's a great story to hear him and that, and it's a powerful, but feel free, knowledge related to a lot of both things, for what, what only they say, for service they give. So it's about five miles. We figured, did anybody know, Weskey said it was about five miles. We don't, whatever it takes to get a, to build a piece of tunnel is what I figured.
Exactly.
From Roper's Road up to about the tunnel.
Thomas's address is a federal file, which makes it very much, so.
Let's say five, we get it.
Five, it's what, question, say it.
And Weskey goes all the paperwork, you got a bunch of letters, you do it all better rides, no rides, and you got all that stuff.
I'm working on it, but none of it matters, it's a, a unanimous statement.
Oh, I think that would, we would think that would be a problem.
I didn't expect it.
So that, at our next meeting, at the April meeting, we're going to ask the County Commissioner, our Mr. Short, we're going to put all the back to figures for the room against it. We'll have a lot of that, the basic stuff in there.
Thanks so much.
Item 9F, the VA.
Ladies, moment, Dr. President, medical issue, saying it's been here. So we're kind of filling in. Well, Dr. Lee read this petition, this is in support of Judy and Becky, and their project to get Roy Road named after Dr. Thomas McNish.
To whom it may concern, the Vietnam veterans of America, Chapter 994, unanimously support efforts to rename the Wadia Road after Dr. Thomas McNish. It is our distinct honor and privilege to recognize a hometown hero who qualifies beauty, honor, and country. Dr. Thomas McNish distinguished himself as a United States Air Force pilot during the Vietnam War, having flown 45 combat missions before being shot down over North Vietnam and being taken prisoner of war in 1966. His internment lasted six and one-half years before being repatriated during Operation Homecoming on March 4th, 1973, which I remember that, that only square, on the D and M. His bravery in combat earned him numerous medals, including a Silver Star with two oak leaf clusters, the Legion of Merrick, the Distinguished Flying Cross, the Bronze Star with the B device for valor, Meritoria Service Medal, and Air Medal with four oak leaf clusters, the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Air Force Achievement Medal, the Presidential Unit Citation, a Purple Heart with one oak leaf cluster, the Prisoner of War Medal, the Distinguished Unit Citation, the Vietnam Cross of Gallantry, and the Vietnam Service Medal with 15 campaign stars. Having survived his ordeal as prisoner of war and then returning to the United States, Dr. McNish completed medical school at Emory University School of Medicine in 1978. He has a distinguished career in the Air Force as a hospital commander, an aviation accident investigator, and has advanced the science of G-force effects on flight, flight crew members. In conclusion, Dr. McNish's life's contributions exemplify the Air Force's motto, integrity first, service of ourselves, and excellent in all we do. Renaming the Wadia Road after Dr. Thomas McNish has been a small token of appreciation for a man who has served our nation so admirably. This is from our chapter president, sincerely, Bill Talbot, Vietnam veterans of America, Chapter 994, from North Carolina.
That Silver Star was two oak leaf clusters. For those of you who don't, don't want that beat, basically put in simple angles, that means three Silver Stars. There's not a whole lot of veterans out there anywhere today that can say there's got three Silver Stars. The other reason we're here is because we knew that the roster was coming tonight to talk about our two wonderful veteran service officers that we have in Mexico. And I wish to give a report on these two ladies. And I probably think that this takes you gentlemen too long to pick up on the idea that when he was giving you those numbers, that how things were increasing each year. What a fine job these two ladies were doing for the veterans of Macon County and for Macon County as a whole. I'd like everybody in to stand up and give a two ladies. One more item, and then we'll be done. And talking with Lee and Christie the other day, they were telling us about the roster coming tonight, and like to have some of us veteran friends, and we agreed to that. And they were telling me about things were going on in the office, and then they were telling me about a gentleman who had a dying wish, an old veteran, that only one last time to go to a bench that he donated. Having survived his ordeal as prisoner of war and when returning to the United States, Dr. McNish completed medical school at Enron University School of Medicine in nineteen seventy-eight. He has a distinguished career in the Air Force as a hospital commander, an aviation accident investigator, and has advanced the science of G-force effects on flight, flight crew members. In conclusion, Dr. McNish's life's contributions exemplify the Air Force's motto, integrity first, service of ourselves, and excellent in all we do. Renaming the wire your road after Dr. Thomas McNish is but a small token of appreciation for a man who has served our nation so admirably. This is from our chapter president, sincerely Bill Talbot, Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 994. Welcome, Mike from North Carolina.
That Silver Star was two oak leaf clusters. For those of you who don't, don't want that beat, basically put in simple angles, that means three Silver Stars. There's not a whole lot of veterans out there anywhere today that can say they've got three Silver Stars. The other reason we're here is because we knew that, that Proctor was coming tonight to talk about our two wonderful veteran service officers that we have in Mexico. And I listened to his going before on these two ladies. And I probably think that, didn't think you gentlemen, too long to pick up on the idea that when he was giving you those numbers, that how things were increasing each year, what a fine job these two ladies were doing for the veterans of Macon County, and for Macon County as a whole. I'd like everybody in to stand up and give it to them. One more item, and then we'll be done. And talking with Lee and Christie the other day, they were telling us about what Proctor was coming tonight, and like to have some of us veteran friends, and we agreed to that. And they were telling me about things were going on in the office, and then they started telling me about a gentleman who had a dying wish, an old veteran, that only one last time, to go to a bench that he donated on the Franklin Greenway. Now I don't know if it was his wife, or his child, or whatever, but he wanted to go back to that bench one more time before he passed away. He has since passed away. These two ladies, they could have just said, well, you know, we'll see if we can do anything. You know, I don't know, it wasn't something that they had to do. It wasn't anything that they were required to do. But they took it upon their own, to get with AMP, Joey Hiss, and a couple more guys. They went and picked this guy up in the county ambulance, they took him to the Greenway, they sent him on his bench, and let him visit. You got any idea how much that meant to that man? And how much these two women did to that man? They don't want to focus on that. But in discussing that, Lee says, what we need is some discretionary funds. And they have a county budget, we know that, everybody has, they're all part of the county budget, I've been here before, under the budget steps, I know, I know what it's like. But they said they just needed a little money in the pocket, to help a veteran now, not now, not two or three days from now, not a week from now, and you know what the bureaucracy is with the VA? It could be weeks, it could be months, before anything is done. But just a few bucks here and there, to that, to get somebody that needed food, maybe, that needed help paying a child bill, that needed thirty-five dollars for transit to haul them to the VA, and I, and I thought we'd have to see what we can do. We just happened to have a VVA meeting that night, and we just got at our meeting. And what we came up with was a check made out to Macon County, and down under the four parts, we got veteran service officer discretionary fund, because we don't want to give it nowhere else. We're going to present that to county finance office. I know it has to go through the profit channel to finance, but that's purposeful process, change things like that, five hundred dollars, you don't have to give it purposefully. But these ladies just need a little bit of money, to help out when somebody needs one thing. But we wanted to give five hundred dollars, and we wanted to challenge the board to make that, or it's seen that, fair enough. But anything that we can do through our veterans organization, to help those two ladies, you can bet we're going to do it, we're going to stand up for them. Anything they need, they know all they have to do is yell at us, and they'll get our attention.
Let me ask Lady Tracy, now when you need it, to get this one picture, if you go to Lori, how, how, how exactly, yeah, they will set up a line in there, in the budget board, set up a line item, all...
We have county credit cards, so if something they like, a particular interview bill, what kind of, we have to tell them, so they have to be creative and...
Most of our need is for veterans to, you can't afford to pay on the transit fee, or don't have the gas, get to medical, that's our biggest thing, and we see lots that can't afford to, of course, it's a great thing to get...
So if Rick says, I mean, and then right, it's up, if the five hundred should start running low between now and budget time, that may be a budget time, but... So if it gets running low between now and budget time, would you come back before the board and say, you know, that five hundred that nine-nine-four gave is running low, would that be a proper way to do that? In budget time, make a request, to your, to someone right here, I think, and maybe like Rick said, for a farm, yeah. And keep a tally of what, how much you spent over the whole year, and then we'll know what to do, not you, but...
Well, in our, in the counties, above and beyond, is what we have for our, is unparalleled for a lot of county offices, and we, we have everything we need, we're, we're beyond right there.
You ever tell them that? Well, we were in lobby, I mean, we were in, you know, I mean, what's amazing, three weeks ago, is how many counties no longer even have a veteran service office? That's what disappoints me. And we want to enhance ours, not to beat it out of them, it's only that. You say, if that, if that would work better, would that would work better than that, would it manage to do that? If they see that she's running short, just come back, I think that would be good. In budget time, we could...
Your point is, and I'm going to say something about March 31st.
Uh, yes, indeed. March 31st will be Vietnam Veterans Day, be a parade from Town Hall Park, lots of square, and some dignitaries will say a few words, Mr. Chu will be involved in that, and I hope some other commissioners will as well, you know, that is. And I didn't have Mr. Waters there at all. So, uh, uh... Saturday evening, so, parade's on Saturday evening, I think, and it's just going to be about that, one block, and, uh, be Vietnam Veterans Day. Vietnam Veterans Day is officially on the twenty-ninth day of March, as the day of the last combat troops leaving Vietnam in nineteen seventy-four, last combat troops.
Can you originate word, Mr. Vietnam Veterans Day?
Vietnam Veterans Day happens to have, like it, this entire country. And, uh, at that time, conflict, each year, so, uh, I think we can, we can be proud of that. I'm sorry, I won't take it this year. I'll be somewhere, if it is done. I'm going back, to your, your, for memory, or, I may, I may just say, only two weeks, but I will miss, I will miss Vietnam Veterans Day. My sorry comment, I'm glad, uh, Proctor's here tonight, talking about these two ladies, when you were a first sergeant. My, my sorry comment would be, ask if you know the difference between a second lieutenant and a first sergeant? A second lieutenant would get you killed, a first sergeant would make you rich.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be honest, uh, as a commissioner, it's sometimes tough to sit up here and resolve, do the parade, and interpret, the county business, but tonight's been a blessing, the tree preparation, thank all of you for your service, and we did get you out of here, looks like about one minute before seven p.m., so it's probably better for you to attend, so, oh, you're dismissed. You're welcome to stay and hang out with us.
Attorney's wanted a heart attack.
Mr. Chairman, we do have, I'd like to introduce Ms. Betsy Hunter. Ms. Hunter will come forward, uh, she certainly has a personal, uh, story about cystic fibrosis, and we, Ms. Hunter has a very, very short, uh, to bring the board up, about cystic fibrosis, I think we all know somebody that has suffered from cystic fibrosis. And, uh, so, uh, I know my wife's, uh, first cousin, uh, struggled with, passed away from cystic fibrosis, and so it's, it's a very, uh, it's a disease that, that can affect any family, and so, Betsy, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So you can talk to us, we'll then read the resolution, we'll ask for a motion.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, uh, our newspaper, Ryan, wrote an absolutely awesome article about it after spending about two hours with us and me explaining it, so I'm just going to put it here, and y'all can pass it on, and things like that. But cystic fibrosis is a genetic disease, and along with cancer, it is one of the worst things that you can tell a parent that their brand-new baby has cystic fibrosis. When I was growing up, if they lived to getting, getting into kindergarten, it was a miracle. Today, they can live into their thirties, but it's a life-changing event. They get up in the morning, they have to put on vests, which are percussion, that beat their chest to keep the mucus flowing, and out of getting stuck in their lungs. They have to take medications to digest their food. Some people have the lungs, some have the pancreas, my granddaughters have both organs that are involved in this. They're doing well now, they have developed one drug, there are three different functions to the cell that need to be addressed, opening it, the salt content, and the protein. They've got one medication now that is available to them, and they've been approved for it, but my son has a graduate degree in nuclear engineering, and he's going to have to find help to afford the drug. He works for the government, he's with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and when he brings his paycheck home, it's like he's on minimum wage. That drug will cost him twenty-seven thousand dollars a year per child, and they need three medications each. So you can imagine how he's feeling right now. Cystic fibrosis has some areas that he can pursue, but, you know, it's, it's not a for-sure thing. They, these drugs now are, and other treatments are allowing, uh, children who are born with cystic fibrosis to live into their thirties, if they do not contract a particular bacteria that will colonize the lung, and therefore cause early death. And I'm praying that with more awareness, and more help with funding, the federal government does not give a lot of funding, since AIDS came into effect, a lot of that money went to research for that. So it's private funds, and it's a lot of walking the streets, and asking a lot of you folks who have businesses in this area to make donations. We have a 5K on the thirty-first of this month, and I have been talking to businesses in the area, and they have been extremely generous. And I'm not asking for money tonight, I'm just asking that we make it Awareness Month, Week, at the end of the month. And if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but this is where my, my heart is, with these two kids. And I have eleven grandchildren, six great-grand, so I have a lot open to love.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, with your permission, go ahead and read the proclamation.
Sure.
Proclamation of the Macon County Commissioners that March twenty-five through thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, shall be cystic fibrosis awareness week. Now whereas cystic fibrosis, commonly referred to as CF, is a genetic disease affecting nearly seventy thousand children and adults worldwide, including approximately thirty thousand in the United States, nearly one thousand of whom live in North Carolina, and whereas in CF, a defective gene causes a body to produce an abnormally thick, sticky mucus which causes the lungs resulting in life-threatening lung infections, and obstructs the pancreas, preventing digestive enzymes from reaching the intestines to help break down and absorb food. And whereas more than ten million Americans are symptomless carriers of the defective CF gene, as a result, CF gene occurs in approximately one in every thirty-five hundred live births in the United States, and nine hundred new cases are diagnosed each year. And whereas, along with advances in the treatment of CF, the number of adults with CF has steadily grown. Today, fifty percent of the CF population is eighteen years or older, and the median age of survival for a person with CF has increased above forty years. And whereas infant, infant blood screening is the most reliable and least costly method to detect a genetic defect and thereby identify persons likely to have CF, the age of diagnosis is vital, as it permits opportunity for early treatments that can enhance quality of life and increase longevity. And whereas, clearing mucus from the lungs is an important part of the daily CF treatment regime, while other methods include inhalable antibiotics and pancreatic, pancreatic enzymes. However, people with CF have a variety of symptoms, due to more than one hun, more than eighteen hundred mutations of the CF gene, so treatment depends on the stage of disease and organs involved. And whereas, there are eight world-class treatment centers in North Carolina which specialize in the diagnosis and care of persons with CF, helping to provide access to innovative treatments that play such a crucial role in their lives. This accessibility to resources is a critical component to the CF patient's survival, and whereas improving the length of quality of life for people with CF starts with awareness. Now therefore, upon a motion by Ronnie Beal...
Seconded by, here's you, here's yours, all in favor?
Aye.
And approved, being hereby proclaimed by the Macon County Board of Commissioners that March twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, is cystic fibrosis awareness week in Macon County, and the board commends its observance to all citizens.
Thank you very much.
So Betsy, we hope you best of luck with your 5K.
Thank you.
Betsy will work hard, and she will ask us for a donation, and never back up, and we try to help her all we can.
And I appreciate all the help, all the awareness, and if any of y'all are free around twelve o'clock on the thirty-first, come on out and eat some chili with us, which has been donated by Wendy's and Ingalls.
As long as you don't have to do the 5K, we'll be right.
I'm not, I'm not going to do it, I'm too old for that. No, just come on out and eat if you're available. Yes, and the money goes to the foundation, not to my children.
That's right. So thank you, Ms. Betsy, for everything.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your grandbaby.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to, uh, old business, consideration of capital project ordinance, and that's a radio communications upgrade, and Ms. Lord.
If you're recalling fiscal year seventeen, you appropriated four hundred thousand for the radio communications upgrade project, and we passed the capital project ordinance, and you appropriated additional four hundred thousand in current budget, so this ordinance just actually puts that extra four hundred thousand in the play, so you can move forward with the project.
Your motion approved. Motion approved, and second, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
No silence, Mr. Chairman. Consideration of grant project ordinance for weatherization assistance program, contract number seven-three-zero-five, Finance Director, Ms. Lori Hall.
Back in July, we prepared budget amendment, the board approved it for the weatherization funds for the fiscal year, and John has received additional funds, so this grant project ordinance just establishes the total amount of funds that he's received for this fiscal year of the winterization, but it's not, it's not in, it's not counted money, it's all correct money.
Most different, we made them approve. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Follow my mic. Few further old business, moving on to new, E R A D, E Rad Recovery Agreement, Sheriff Robert Hall. Welcome, Sheriff.
I'm going to make your day, I'm going to be very short, I'm going to turn it over to one of my narcotics officers, who's going to tell you all about it and what we're doing. This is Josh Stewart, he's with the Sheriff's Office of Narcotics Unit.
Welcome, Josh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I appreciate you having us. What we're talking about tonight is a, uh, contract with a company called E Rad. E Rad is electronic recovery and access to data. Essentially, when we're trying to dismantle these drug organizations, we have to look at multiple facets of how they operate. They operate like a business, they have a commodity they sell, and they have a cash flow that comes in, of course, for them, that commodity's illegal to sell, and the cash flow that comes in is seizable by the government. For us to successfully dismantle these organizations, we need to take their drugs and the proceeds from those drugs, so they can get out of jail, and take that money that they just sold the drugs with, and go buy more and start over. So for us to be successful in our fight against drugs, we have to be able to do both of those things. One of these, uh, difficulties we have, is with the new technology, the drug dealers aren't just going in and going to their suppliers with a bag of cash, and walking out with a bag of drugs. It's not that simple anymore. We are fighting cryptocurrency, we're fighting prepaid Visa cards, they're finding ways around carrying large sums of money around, because they know that's something we look for as a drug dealer. So now what they're doing is they're taking that money, and they're putting on these prepaid Visa cards. There's hundreds of these different kinds of cards, they're considered open-source cards, so that means that I can take a prepaid Visa card with a hundred dollars, hand it to Commissioner Tate, and it's the same as handing him a hundred dollar bill. There's federal, uh, case law, and there's state case law that backs that up, that we have the right to not only look at that card, but also seize the funds off that card, if we can form a nexus... we can form a nexus with the drug operation. This is a tool that's going to benefit the Macon County Sheriff's Office. Essentially, we'll be able to seize that money off of those cards, take that money from that drug operation, and go through the federal government and do either a civil or an administrative seizure on that money. There's a very lengthy contract. If you have any questions about the procedure or any of the contract, feel free to ask, and I'll do my best to answer.
You guys can get up and speak. This tool, this what we want to do, it allows you to pull the money off of that card?
It allows us to seize the money off of what's considered an open-source card. So you have closed source and open source. So I have a debit card in my pocket, that's a closed source from just me. I went to a bank, I got a line of, you know, checking account, I'm the only person that can access that money. And open source is like an Outback gift card. I can buy that at Walmart, hand it to you, you can go to Outback and spend it, just like currency. That's the idea. So that allows us to take the money from that card, seize it, move it to an account, and then do a forfeiture on that, and then move it to the Macon County courts.
And what exactly is this? Is it a service that somebody provides?
It's a service, yes, sir. So essentially, what happens is it's a card reader that's put through a program on the Internet that's maintained by E-RAD. It's their program, it's proprietary. I've been through the training to operate that program, and that program will allow me to swipe the card, see what's on the card, no transaction history, anything like that, just how much is on it, and then if we choose to seize that or not, we...
Tell the process of seizing it.
So essentially, we have multiple steps with that. So I'll give you a hypothetical. If we have a drug dealer that has $10,000 in their possession and a pound of methamphetamine, the idea is, well, that $10,000 is proceeds from selling the rest of their methamphetamine. We're going to take it, we're going to freeze that if that $10,000 is on a card. And then I'm going to go through my branch and my chain and say, okay, this $10,000 is seizable under these laws, and it's frozen. I have a 10-day window to do that, and then we can seize that money. That money is held in basically an account until a judge deems that was a proper procedure, didn't violate any proceedings, and awards us that money.
What's the fee? The percentage of what you run?
The fee, so we paid a $500 invitation, set up a web training fee. That was to get the system up and running, train me, and basically learn how to use it. We pay a $300 license fee per year, and then we pay 7.7% of the forfeitures that are brought in. There's two options. The option we chose was the 7.7, so we pay that after the forfeiture is paid, or, no, I'm sorry, it's granted to us by the court. The other option is a lesser percentage, but we would be responsible for that before that money is actually granted to us by the court.
And we also involve Lori and Chester in this process, too?
Yes.
If somebody is harmed, could that money be used to compensate injured, a victim that's, like, got harmed due to this person and their drug activity?
No. It can't be. It can only be used for law enforcement purposes.
That's go back in your book. And what percentage goes back into the Sheriff's Department that y'all can use?
So if we do a, I have to take, we do an administrative seizure through the federal government. We would receive 70% of the seizure amount. So if it was $10,000, we would receive $7,000, and then we would pay the percentage on the total amount. So we pay the $10,000, 7.7% of that, half that of our $7,000.
Who do you respond to or audit to? Who does your audit to?
I believe it'd be internally.
You books and stuff each year, I mean, who verifies that it's coming back in here and not being spent?
All of our money, everything that we get automatically goes to finance. We don't keep anything.
There's going to be paperwork from the federal court system, typically, if it's a federal case.
Then we earmark it back to you on different...
Yeah, they have a specific, those federal forfeiture funds have a specific purpose. So we have a separate fund set up for those, and we have to carry them forward year over year. We have to make sure that they spend them on the uses that are laid forward.
They can't go into the general fund.
Right. So it's segregated.
Is it earmarked?
Yep.
It's earmarked? Would you use it? So federal government gets hurt?
That is generally the percentage. Sometimes it will go up to an 80/20, so we would get 80, they would get 20.
So it's got a string of...
It really does. It costs money to seize money, that's what they say.
And it's routinely, we're dealing with this right now, and we can do absolutely nothing with the cards.
Yeah.
We've had several cases.
It's a current problem here, unfortunately. It's the future of drug dealing, and it's something we're trying to get ahead of the curve, so we're ready, and that becomes the mainstream to do.
Eventually, they'll find another way to go around this little, the way with the cards.
Speaking with the sheriff's liaison, Mr. Chairman, this is just trying to keep up. This is just law enforcement trying to keep up with the things that they're trying to circumvent any way they can to keep that money flow going and hide the money. This is just another way to try to keep ahead of the system, Josh, that y'all are trying to do to get that money and not let them put it back in their hands.
That's exactly right.
It's not actually. There's some money to be spent at front, it's not a cost.
You're pretty much right that you wouldn't otherwise get.
That's exactly right.
Every day, we're seeing it.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, as liaison, I'd make the motions, give the Sheriff's Department permission to go ahead and enter into an agreement. I guess, is it with Heartland, is that, or E-RAD, is that what you want to...
Yes, sir.
Probably would be appropriate for county manager to enter that.
County manager entering the contract and, as outlined in the documents presented.
I'll second that. I don't want you hurt.
Thank you.
Before we go.
No further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Eleven B, consideration of audit contract. Finance Director, Ms. Lori Hall.
Okay, so back in January, I believe it was, the auditor was here to present the results of our '17 audit. And of course, he alluded to that there would be a fee increase. So I wanted to briefly kind of update you guys. And I learned more, I went to my finance officer's spring conference two weeks ago, and there were staff from the Department of State Treasurer there explaining these changes that are happening in the Office of the State Auditor. So if you look at, all of you got one of these little thin booklets at all at time, you don't, you haven't looked at it, take time, you'll be surprised to see that, you know, Macon County's federal awards was about $39 million, state awards was about $19 million. And of those amounts, those are very large, there are, let's see, $30 million of the federal money and $16 million of the state money was Medicaid payments. So that wasn't money that came to Macon County. However, our DSS staff had to determine eligibility, but that was money sent directly to Medicaid recipients. So the Office of the State Auditor has decided that those federal direct benefit payments would no longer be reported in the schedule, okay? So what that does, that's going to reduce our audit threshold dollar-wise, because you take away our, those direct benefit payments, that $39 million in federal money goes down to $6.2 million, and the state money of almost $19 million goes down to $2.4 million. Well, last year, our threshold was almost $1.2 million for federal as far as testing. What that means is if we have any federal program that has at least $1.2 million or above, they have to evaluate and possibly test. Well, this year, because of those direct benefit payments moving out, that's dropping down to $750,000. So any federal programs that are $750,000 more of expenditures, they're going to have to evaluate and possibly test. On top of that, you have to test 40% of our federal expenditures and 40% of our state expenditures. So in the federal and state, especially the state side, we don't get a lot of large state monies, there's a lot of small pots of money. So they're going to have to test about $2.5 million of federal and about $1 million of state, which means, unfortunately, there's no huge state program left anymore that's going to meet that $1 million threshold. So they're projecting they're probably going to have to test five state programs and three federal programs. So, you know, across the state, all 100 counties are impacted, it's not just Macon County. So our proposed fee is $73,150, which is an $8,000 increase or 12%. So I know that's pretty substantial. So I reached out to some other counties in the areas that use Martin Starrens, and we are on the low end of an increase. Again, an increase is not good, but I spoke to six other counties. There's a 10% increase, a 22% increase, a 30% increase, a 40% increase, a 41, and a 48. And those range from $6,500 up to $21,000 increase. So I just wanted to give you that background to say, I know $8,000 is a lot, but in the scheme of things, at least we're on the lower end, you know, of the spectrum there. And I would just ask that you do approve this audit contract allowance to remain in fiscal '18, because, you know, I'm not opposed to changing audit firms at some point if it's needed. However, with this change and all this extra testing, it's going to require more of my staff time, the auditor's time, because we're going to have to document our internal control compliance with, oh, it just left me. The, sorry, the word just left me. But anyway, it's, you know, documenting our procedures and our compliance, et cetera. So, you know, it's going to be a lot of extra work, and of course, if we had to go out there and change firms, then that's just compounding the issue, so. Like I said, all across the state, this is just kind of a, we're all wading through these waters together to see how this year one. And unfortunately, this state auditor, there was no, you know, prior, you know, it's not likely we're given, you know, a year or two to prepare. It's just like, boom, for 6318, this is how it's going to be.
We can't tell, but in front of mandate, no, can we?
No. So anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Pardon? She's auditor. Okay, she's good.
Okay, we get much in the favor, we're going to discuss.
Did you, Mr. Higgins, say, did you do a motion? Did you do a motion?
No, no, I was just talking to her. My lady started to ride. I touched on this last year, I touched on it again this year, I'll touch on it again next year. As long as they will spend $73,000, I understand what they're saying, but I just think $73,000 is, in my mind, an assortment of, 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 of national price.
Those firms that you looked at, Lori, those other counties, were they different? Firms, are they all Martin Starrens?
Those were all Martin Starrens, and I reached out to some other counties, but a lot of them were maybe in RFP process. They didn't have a contract yet, they didn't know the numbers yet.
What's your recommendation, Lori?
My recommendation?
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, my recommendation is to award the contract to Martin Starrens and get through this hump and, you know, see, see how it, you know, goes this year with these new requirements.
I mean, it's, you've got to be audit.
Yeah.
And the shopper, and the state clerk, and all that, I mean, I don't like spending that money in.
Cheaper is not always better, especially with governmental audits. There are, you know, limited firms across the state that, because I talked to some other counties, and it's like, yeah, their price might have sounded better, but they're using a small, local hometown CPA. And nothing against them, but they just don't have the, they don't have the staff. This year's audit especially is going to take extra time. You know, you've got to have a large enough firm that has enough staff to be able, one, to know the government regulations and do it properly, you know, and two, to try to have it done in a timely fashion.
An audit for a private business and an audit for a governmental body are two entirely different things.
You get into a situation where you could, you know, if you saved $10,000 or $15,000, you could do a lot more than $10,000 or $15,000 worth of damage if you messed audit up.
In a hurry.
Motion to prove. Second. Further discussion?
I completely understand from this is coming from, I think, Paul's saying, we're playing a rock and hard place, and I do understand what you're saying.
We talked about it. I brought it up later. How do we know what pays in, you know, through the RFP process, we qualify? I fully understand, you know, get an accurate, current dollar, which is a big problem, basically government process, how do we know? How do we, I just have a hard time looking at lobby as taxpayers and saying, we're giving $73,000, we're going to have to, we have to draw RFP, we have to, I mean, my motion's based on recommendation by a lady who handles $50 million of taxpayer money, of the troubles of keeping it legal, I don't even know where to begin. So my motion's based on the recommendation from the finance auditor, we have to trust, you know, the dollars.
Second. William, I'm thinking too, so we're under discussion right now. I'm remembering back to Mr. Beal, you can probably help me. I know when we go to a lot of NCAA/CC meetings, there's all these vendors that come in. Are there other larger, other larger firms that are Martin Starrens?
I'd say if you have trouble rounding up two others, they can give you a beer. But I'm getting, because none of them are located, it's very, very difficult. Now, if you was down in, if you was in Raleigh, there's two other firms that does counties, but they won't do a county of our size. It's not worth their time and money. You're probably looking at double that price. I know a lot of small rural counties, Martin Starrens is about one of them, and the only reason we probably got a break is because of your staff, Lori. That's the reason we got a break. That's the reason ours is not 20% higher, because audit firms come in and were recruiting now than ever, and you know that. So there's just not many that want to tackle it anymore. They're getting out of the business, they're not clamoring to get into business.
That's awesome.
All right, Christopher Gillespie, I completely understand.
And I understand.
Where you're coming from, too. And I'm thinking, it seems like we discussed this last year, too, but I can't remember exactly.
If we had them on every corner, you know, Paul was exactly right, but that's just not the case.
Yeah, last year, we were able to negotiate it. We had no inquiry for the '17 audit. And believe me, I tried to get this number down, but...
Rob Corr called a question here, we'll look forward, of course, but would it be feasible? Is that something NCAA/CC can provide to the other, what all the counties use, the 100 counties, what we...
I pulled that information, I actually, there is, they have that information documented.
Yeah, Department of State Treasurer does.
The Department of State Treasurer does, and I think they even have it documented, how much they pay.
They do, but that's hard to compare, because not everybody does a cap for...
Right.
Some people have financial statements prepared, some don't, so I'm hesitant to just use that State Treasurer's list. That's why I reached out personally to these other counties to say...
That's what we have to do.
I think if you're going to...
It's not apple for apples.
What percent increase are you getting, what dollar amount?
I think if you're going to pursue what Commissioner Gillespie is talking about doing, you probably need to identify firms that you would be very comfortable with working with and invite them to make a proposal. Because it's entirely possible that you would get some firms making proposals that you might not be comfortable with, truthfully.
It's hard to find, they're hard to find to come. With that, I was watching what Kenny was saying, they're having their ready struggle. With that one, Washington Wilt's Kenny Listes, they're having their ready struggle. So, talk of the location, they don't wanna go there.
You clearly need to have somebody that has substantial experience doing audits in accordance with, what is it, chapter one fifty-nine, the, yeah, yeah, the local government budget fiscal control. It's a whole different, it's a whole different set of rules, and, you know, a great CPA can do an audit, a great CPA who's never done one of these audits before may not do a great audit. They need, they need to have experience.
Does the school system help Martin Starrens?
No, they don't.
Who they help?
Uh.
Dixon Hughes?
No, it's not Dixon Hughes. It's, I can't think of the name of it.
Do they do counties?
They don't, I've actually asked them to do that before.
But they used to, Dixon Hughes.
Dixon Hughes does, but the school doesn't use Dixon Hughes. They use Anderson and White, CPA's name or something like that.
All right, any further questions? All in favor, seem probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four to one.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
New business, item C, discussion regarding soccer fields in Franklin and Highlands. And that's on me, as we're heading into budget and the CIP plan. I just had something I wanted to put on all of our radars. Presently, not only our soccer fields, but our football field is made out of real grass. I took a picture at the Highlands field the other day, and in particular, in soccer, the areas right in front of the goals get a tremendous amount of wear and tear, you can see in this picture, the goals actually slid to the side, but the big puddle is right in the middle. So, it's almost impossible to do grass. I personally sawed it early in the, right about now, as soon as women's soccer ends, so we can have a little bit of growth before soccer starts in August. I'll come back to the picture. There we go. So, I just wanted on our radar, I think we are the only fields in the area, there's still grass. You go to Hayesville, they're turf. You go to Raven County, they're artificial turf. You go to Jackson County, they're turf. What that does is it provides zero maintenance, you can play on them in any kind of weather, and I brought just a couple samples, so y'all can kinda see, they've even got thatch in them now, for what they do. Can you go to the third picture?
Yeah. You see a thatch?
Thatch, that's the brown, so it looks like the dead and the grass. They'll try and make it real.
They don't wait with stuff for Havenville.
That's perfect, right there, right there. So, this is looking at half of the soccer field, so I just want y'all to know what I'm investigating. One is, is I'm investigating a full field price for turf, and the second thing I'm investigating is what we call the six box. It's a six-yard box, it's a small square, the smallest square at the top is, or smallest rectangle at the top is the goal, the little bitty box right in front of it. So, what I'm looking at doing, since that area, as you saw in the wet picture, receives the most traffic, I'm gonna see if we can potentially turf, artificially turf those areas that are getting the most damage and leave the rest as grass. I just think we can do better with Macon County for our kids. My son is a soccer player, I will admit, and he plays on a travel soccer team right now, with the majority of the children that play on it are, live here, reside here in Franklin. Guess, guess where they play their home field games this time of year? How you even say this? Their home games are played at Swain County, because we don't have a soccer field that they can play on this year, because there's no grass left on them because of use and wear and tear. Jackson County, Raven County, the rest of them, like Smoky Mountain and Jackson County, their field is artificial turf, and they not only play their football on it, but they play their soccer on it. They don't have to mow, they don't have to mow them, they don't have to put chalk on the lines for every game. They're, they're really perfect. I just think it'd be benevolent of this board to look into it for a lot of reasons. Just bring it to y'all's attention, I am investigating, and I am very early in the process, and I will be looking into it. The only price I've gotten back so far was for the full field, and I have heart failure, you're probably got it, but, full field was just under six hundred thousand to remove the turf and to artificially turf them. So, that's when I started looking into the six-yard boxes, and what they might cost me, but I am working on that, getting to it. But like I say, we're probably, I'm not sure what Cherokee, no, I think Cherokee's, they're turf, too. I think we're one of the very few left. Western Carolina, I think we're one of the very few left that still has real grass and worries about the fertilizers and the maintenance and the headaches of what goes on. Anyway, that's just information, I'm not asking for any action.
That's also proven Franklin's soccer, and Franklin and the Highlands.
That was a per field price on the full thing, that was just only one price, I just got a rough estimate. I don't have it, put it out for bid or anything like that, obviously, we're just kinda getting the price on what it costs.
But that's for Highlands, that's for Highland and Franklin?
I would like to see both bills, son, and both schools. Franklin has, gosh, one, two, seven, possibly, according to how you lay them out, possibly ten different soccer fields, from Coliseum Park to the industrial park to Parker Meadows, the middle school. Highlands has one soccer field, you've got the school, so it gets a lot of use because everybody uses it. Of course, the high school teams don't like it because it tears up their field. The little kids use the outfield and the baseball field, which, which works fine until softball and baseball season are all around, and you've got competing for space. If you had a turf field in both places, then it just saves a lot of headaches, and it's something that we, both towns, can be very proud of. I'm investigating. Item twelve, consent agenda. We get a motion to approve, or if there's anything anybody would like to hold.
Kyle, is there, Kyle, do you have anything you wanna add to that? I don't know, you're here to probably speak to the fees.
Yeah, the fees for water testing and sampling, that's based on the state changing their rates, so we're changing our rates just so that, you know, we're not losing money on those fees that we have to send to the state. It's basically entirely on the state line of time that's got these fees.
You still lose fecals at house?
Yeah, we, we still do the bacteria in house, and those prices don't change.
But, oh, here's the man, I see, thirty-seven bucks.
So, that one up top, that's a fecal that you send to the state. We do coliform and E. coli in house.
What does those cost me?
The in-house?
Yeah, we just, yeah.
That's twenty.
Still forty? So, these all were shipped downstate?
Yeah, and we only do about, we only do three of those. Most of those, we just have on the fee schedule because it's available.
And what's taken on your turf, you need to help, guy? Approved by the board of health?
Yes, sir.
Now, it's.
Motion to approve, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Yeah. Sorry. Under budget amendments, can we add this five hundred dollars as a budget amendment for veterans, the veterans discretionary funds? Get that appropriate, it's like, and start using it immediately.
Thank you, Laurie. We get a second to the consent agenda with the addendum?
With the addendum? I'm moved on.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five aye, Mr. Duncan. I don't think we have any appointments tonight, Chester did, I mentioned that we need to have a closed session. Are we expected to have action following closed session?
Yes, the purpose of the closed session would be to preserve the attorney's privilege, and I do anticipate brief action afterwards.
Motion going closed session, Chairman?
Got a motion?
Sure.
Close session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anybody in here? Call the meeting back to order, and I'm gonna basically just turn it over to our county attorney, Mr. Jones. Chester?
Mm-hmm. Gentlemen, as y'all are aware, there has been a Fair Labor Standards Act and North Carolina Wage and Hour Act claim made against county and the sheriff. That's the, maybe the bad news, the good news is, it appears that we're close to having it resolved. For the benefit of public session, for the benefit of making a decision in connection with this, former deputy Craig Stahl made a claim against Macon County and Macon County sheriff for unpaid wages allegedly owed for hours worked and/or overtime pay. And deputy Stahl was a canine handler for Macon County's sheriff, and his claim involved after-work hours in caring for the dog that he was responsible for. Those after-hour works included times where he needed to be, the dog needed to be fed, taken out to do what dogs have to be taken out for, and just general care when Mr. Stahl was not on the regular clock. As you probably all know, the canine officers take their dogs home, and those dogs reside with them, and so those dogs have needs outside of regular working hours. Long and short of it, though, when Mr. Stahl made his claim known to the sheriff, the sheriff became very proactive with that claim, and the sheriff immediately contacted me, and as a result, he, myself, and, and the county manager looked into the claim and evaluated the claim. Indeed, the sheriff, county manager, and I also consulted with an expert personnel attorney regarding the matter to get a second opinion on the evaluation. It was determined that the claim should be settled if reasonably possible, and upon learning of this issue, I want you to know that the sheriff immediately took steps to formulate, not just formulate, but implement a department policy designed to address the situation which led to this claim, i.e. making sure that officers that were canine handlers got paid for the time they had to, to work with their dogs at home, take them out, feed them, et cetera. The sheriff, as I've indicated, has been very proactive in addressing the problem, which resulted in this, this claim, and the county has been negotiating this claim with the attorney for Mr. Stahl. I'm very pleased to present to this board that the parties, Macon County, Macon County sheriff, and Mr. Stahl appear to be pretty close to reaching an amicable settlement of this so that litigation will not be necessary on this matter. The, I have provided each of you with a proposed, a copy of a proposed general release of claims which would effectively resolve the claim that's been made by Mr. Craig Stahl. Mr. Stahl, through his attorney, had indicated that they would be willing to take back wages in the amount of forty-one thousand, nine sixty-two, and sixty-eight cents. Now, you need to understand, that's the wages, the gross wage that he would be paid, but you need to understand, the cost to the county is a little bit higher because the county has to pay the regular FICA, the regular Medicare, in connection with any other wages that they would pay, they would have to pay those things. They also have to pay the 401K contribution, and then the retirement contribution that they would normally have to pay on those wages. Those numbers bring the grand total of the payout of roughly fifty thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars, but the gross wage that would be paid to Mr. Stahl would be forty-one, nine sixty-two, sixty-eight. Now, his sum also has withholding, so that's not the net amount that he would end up with. He's got to pay taxes out of that as well, his share of the FICA, if, if you're following my, the standard withholding, if you will. So, if the board is inclined to adopt this settlement as set forth in the general release of claims, a copy of which that I provided to each of you, then we'd need a motion to approve it, and then we would need the board to in fact vote and approve it. You do need to understand, these documents have been already signed by Mr. Stahl. He has indicated willingness to settle it on these amicable terms.
Mr. Jennings, we ask you some questions.
Absolutely.
The board members might have them. Mr. Stahl is obviously gonna have some, I would think, very considerable attorney's fees associated with this. We're not paying anything on top of this amount for that, and he'll be responsible out of that amount that we would potentially be settling him.
Yeah, I think.
Pay his attorney out of that.
I think it's very important to observe that this agreement does not pay him money and then also pay attorney's fees. But one thing this agreement does accomplish for the county is by, by avoiding litigation on this claim, we potentially avoid having to pay his attorney's fees, which would be recoverable in that type of litigation. Other questions of the board?
Yes, I have one. Could you clarify, you used the term, the word double, can you give us a hypothetical thing, how long we use the double, go into court?
Yeah. In a Fair Labor Standards Act case, if, for example, it was determined by, by the court that Mr. Stahl should have been paid, let's just, for rough numbers, ten thousand dollars in wages that he didn't get paid. Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, if he has to sue us to get that money, that ten thousand dollars, and he is able to prove that he was entitled to ten thousand dollars, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, that, that is, nothing else appearing, that sum is doubled by the court. And then the court then turns to his attorney and says, how much time do you have in this case? How much do you get paid by the hour? And then there's an attorney's fee as well. So, instead of ten thousand dollars, it would be twenty thousand dollars plus his reasonable attorney's fees.
And that'd be paid by the county, in that scenario?
Correct.
Another question, not be quiet. If we do not vote unanimously, we can't answer a media, is that, well, we could discuss something that a while ago.
Well, I think this board can, can discuss, but I, I think the board does need to understand that under the terms of the agreement, both parties have agreed in effect that this is a, is going to be an amicable settlement, and they don't intend to disparage the other party. In other words, it's water over the dam, and we've resolved it.
Refer it back to you or Mr. Rowland, y'all will.
I think Mr. Rowland can take those, those requests, and if he needs additional information, he's certainly able to call me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else?
I think it is important to add, Chester, that when we were, as you mentioned, we discussed this with a personnel specialist, attorney's fees in these cases are by no means.
They're not small.
Something that are negligible, and the. And the personnel attorney advised us that a good number to look at, a starting place for, would be around $30,000.
I believe that's correct.
No more questions, Mr. Chairman? Before I make a motion, I'd like to say how the sheriff has handled this habit and professionally through his office. The sheriff said in a minute that we knew about this, it's been handled professionally. And you can tell by that, but these gentlemen are sitting right back here. And we appreciate them being here tonight, more than you know. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do put this moment in time behind us. And I make a motion that we approve the settlement that's presented by attorney. And I also, in that motion, we appreciate our attorney and his work too.
Thank you.
We take it out of general fund.
Yeah, we are going to need a budget amendment to accomplish that.
A budget amendment to accomplish that.
I second.
Another second. Discussion, I have a couple things I'd like to say. Anybody else, go ahead, Paul.
I think it's worthy to note that getting to this point is not without a lot of effort. And those efforts of everybody involved, attorney, manager, sheriff, those need to be recognized and understand that sometimes you come together and work for what's for the betterment of the citizens in Macon County. And hopefully, this too will be viewed as that. And I think it's also appropriate to say thank you to the other poll officers for what they do for the citizens in Macon County.
Sure. Anybody else, Paul? Sheriff, I'd just like to say, I've spoken with you a couple times about this. Primarily learning about it and our sessions with the habits, we've been discussing this and going through this entire process. I can't animate enough how professional you've been and how, as the chairman of this board and commissioners on behalf of the county, for handling this, promptly bringing it to our attention and helping us move through this in an amicable fashion. I just want to thank you for that. Again, I think as Chester just said, we look forward as a county to moving past us and getting back to our normal day business.
I do think it needs to be observed that what the county has done here is essentially said, you know, we made a mistake and we're trying to do the right thing and make it right. There's some payments that should have been made for this at-home canine care and we're catching it up.
Not, just from my understanding, I believe that this started, this potential mistake that we were making with this payroll, which I wouldn't have done anyway. Well before you even became sheriff, would be my guess. And that, whatever you did find out about it, you handled it promptly and quickly with us and professionally. As chairman, I just want to say thank you for that.
I believe, I believe I got the call from him the very same day. And I think he pretty much insisted we sit down that day, if I'm not mistaken.
He's not only worked through this problem with us on this, but he's also corrected the issue and warned, so that these, the other gentlemen are being taken care of appropriately.
I'd like to just say two things before you vote. The first thing I'd like to say is, it was no longer than three minutes after I was made aware that this was going to be a claim. I was immediately on the phone with both Chester and with Derek. I mean, literally, within three minutes. The second thing I'd like to say, since you recognize my officers and some of them with their families here tonight, they're not here, they're not here paid. They weren't here at my request to be here tonight. When I asked what they were doing, they were here to support me and they were here to support each other and this unit. And I appreciate them being here tonight. And I appreciate everybody's efforts. And basically, I can't say a whole lot, so we'll just agree.
I see absolutely, and y'all talked, I see absolutely zero intent from anybody that this was an intentional mistake, that it was something that happened.
And one comment, appreciate what you guys do. Your employees at the county, you should absolutely be paid for the hours that you've earned. And I appreciate the way you guys are handling this, what you do to share. And I appreciate that team effort. That's all, like I said, I feel like it absolutely should be paid for the time you put in this. If this is a policy, y'all be paid.
Don't know what we do without you. All right, so we have a motion for, any further discussion? We'll call the question, all in favor, same kind of saying aye?
Did we have a second? Did we have a second?
We had a second, yes we did. Commissioner Shields? Aye, all opposed? Aye, four to one vote, Mr. Decker. Before we adjourn, I don't think there's anything else in our agenda. I'd just like to remind you all that I mentioned to you back in December that I'm planning on being out for the April meeting. I guess Commissioner Bill will be here. And I'll be watching the agenda closely if we have anything that I feel like I'm going to need to be here for, I will tap in wirelessly, it happens, feasible to do?
Nothing, will you?
The sheriff. I need the sheriff to say. Is he still out there?
All right. We'll follow through the law. We'll get in, we'll get all that shit.
He's in the media.
One of the things that worried me was, did we still have unanimous decision without me here? Without me here, it's two coffe.
Oh, yeah. Well, we haven't a majority yet.
Well, we have to be unanimous. Just want to make sure we're all... All right, can we get a motion adjourned? Take a motion adjourned.
Yes, sir.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Can I get your signatures on these? We've got two of them here. Two originals.